Called order the Wednesday, August 30th, 2017, Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, what a privilege it is to be able to wake up and taste of your new mercies this morning. Our hearts and prayers go out to those of our friends, family, and even those that are suffering down in Texas from the effects of the hurricane and even Louisiana now as it moves on over to the east. Lord, grant them, I pray, the wisdom and insight in various counties and parishes that need to not only rescue folks but to begin the long and arduous recovery process. Well, we thank you for the provision you've made for many in their rescue. Where our hearts and prayers go to those whose families who's lost lives. Lord bless this day. I pray you give wisdom to our commissioners or in those that are in leadership in Franklin County. Lord bless them. We thank for the privilege of being in the United States of America and I pray, Lord, we not take it for granted. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
That brings us to correspondence and organizational business. Do you have anything from the county, First Derrick?
I don't, and I also don't see David Luke, who's supposed to be here to give a presentation, but he... This might be him right here.
All right. Are you David? All right, come on down, just in time.
Of course, we've got some running in the building, Andrew.
Hey, how are you?
If you don't mind, I'll pass out some material here.
Couple minutes, are you good?
Oh, I'm okay, yeah.
Thanks.
Hey, well, thank you very much for making time for me this morning. Apologies I'm late here. Just wanted to give you a few updates on the program. Larry Sharp, who's our Member Services Director, gets out to each of our counties once a year. So you've probably already met with him sometime here in 2017. This presentation probably looks pretty similar to what he provided you already. So I'm not going to go through it all, I'm just going to highlight a couple of slides that have changed because they contain county-specific data. So it'd be, it's to give you some more information about how you're performing as a member. K-Camp continues to grow. We're, we've added six counties since 2014. We added our first three cities this year, including the city of Fort Scott as of July 1st. We're bidding for additional counties this fall. So the word is really out, and I think that's really because our, you know, we provide typically much higher limits than the commercial market, lower the program deductibles, coverage that's really tailored for county operations, and all at substantially less pricing, lower pricing. And then, of course, we have a range of risk management services that the commercial market just doesn't provide. What I can tell you is having been with K-Camp since January 1 of 14, I've bid probably 11 counties, we've picked up six of those. We have not ever been more in terms of pricing than the competition. And again, higher limits and lower deductibles and services. So we're constantly sort of testing the market, so to speak, and we kind of know where we stand. And if we don't get it, it's usually just because of the local agent relationship. So the pool is very much in a growth mode. Very competitive with what else is out there. Franklin County, of course, is a charter member of K-Camp. You helped form the pool back in 1991. And not only have we grown in terms of membership size, but if you look at Slide 10, we had our 2016 audit completed in April, approved by the board. And you can see our net asset position has grown to over $20 million. The board has leveraged that position over the years by increasing program limits, adding services. We've added coverage, we added cyber coverage, for example, several years ago without ever charging the members for those things. We've leveraged that surplus position to provide those things. Interestingly, surpluses continue to grow. So the board last year went through a very thorough process of evaluating how much surplus is really too much. So regulators look at, you know, making sure you have enough surplus to absorb bad loss years. And so there's all kinds of financial ratios that our board looks at, that regulators also look at to evaluate that surplus position. We're far surpassing those ratios. So we know we've met the minimum. The question is, when do we get to too much where we want to start returning money to the members? So the board hired an actuarial consultant. We went through a process called dynamic capital modeling where they stress test the pool's balance sheet and try to establish a target net asset range. And say, okay, amounts above that net asset range, then we're going to declare for dividends. They then had to develop a dividend policy and figure out, okay, who gets what? We've got 66 members today. Most pools, when they first declare, will go back to the first year of operation. They'll say, well, let's look at 1991, in our case. This board said, well, other members joined in years immediately subsequent to that. We hate for them to miss out and have to wait for several years to get a dividend because they really helped to build this surplus. So they took from the 1991, '96, 2001, and 2006 years. The good news for Franklin County is you were in all of those years. And then the way the dividend policy works that they developed is the members that contribute, you know, you basically get, your portion is relative to your contribution amount. So if you paid more in, you're going to get a larger dividend. You're one of our larger counties, you're going to get a larger dividend. It's offset by, if a county had a worse-than-average loss year in the program year for which a dividend is declared, but everybody who participated in that year gets something.
See, while you're talking about the membership?
Yes.
I notice most of the bigger counties are non-members, the Johnson County, Shawnee, Sedgwick. Is there a reason behind that, that it benefits them?
There is. I would say most of those larger counties are going to be self-insured. So for K-Camp, and I put the, it's kind of boring, so I tried to spend too much time on it, but we have our program structures here on Slides 8 and 9. And you can see, we were, you know, our member deductibles are quite low, 500 on the property, first dollar coverage on the liability. Again, the marketplace generally isn't providing those. And then we retain the first $250,000 of a property loss and the first $500,000 of a liability loss. A larger county like a Johnson County, for example, probably self-insures up to a million. So they wouldn't even need K-Camp to play in that $500,000 way. They'll just finance that themselves. Now, we could add them. What we could do is say, you attach it a million and then you can, you can access our reinsurance. But they wouldn't really be in the pool part, they wouldn't be in that dark blue layer at the bottom. So they're not a great fit for the program for that reason, those larger counties. Does that answer the question?
Yes, that's mine.
So, so the board did declare its first-ever dividend, that was kind of the basis for it. Your dividend check that I'm here to present you with today is $24,857. So I want to thank you very much for your participation in the pool and for helping us to build this program. It continues to be very successful and I think there's a lot of growth ahead for the organization. So, I don't know who I should present that to?
Probably the clerk.
Thank you.
All right.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things if I could, with county-specific information. When Larry was here, he gives you kind of your loss, the pool's loss ratio and what your rates for the pool have done as a whole. If you look at Slides 11 through 13, you can kind of see what Franklin County's experience has been. You'll see, you know, wherever it's over 100% on the loss ratio, it means we paid out more in claims than we collected in contribution. So in 2009, we paid out 48% more than we collected. The same is true in 2014, we paid out two and a half times what we collected. And the reserve, for some of these newer years, you can't really rely on because they're, it's paid amounts and reserves on claims, and those reserves may not pan out. It may be less, it may be more, so we don't really rely too heavily on the most recent year. And then you had a couple of very good years, like in 2012 and 2013. 2013, you had no losses. It was hard to imagine a scenario like that, but you did. And so this is very typical for a public agency, to have this wildly fluctuating loss experience. What happens is when you're in commercial insurance, and this is why pools formed, the commercial carrier is going to try to collect that money back in those bad years, and they're going to raise your rates, sometimes raise deductibles, to try to collect that money back. And with pools, you don't see that. So if you look at your, your next two slides, you can see what your, both your property rate and your liability rate did in the ensuing years. So you had a really bad loss year in 2009, but you look at your property rate, it went down by a cent. Your liability rate did go up, but then look at what it's done since, even with a couple of bad loss years mixed in. It's either flat or decreasing. And that, to me, is the biggest advantage of being in a pool, is you can, you have that predictability, that stability with your rates. And then lastly, you know, the services that we provide, I wanted to give you, if I could, what we call a usage report, which shows you all the risk management services that we're providing, but more importantly, how you're using those currently. So we have Attorney Assist, which is, we contract with Fullstone Sifkin out of Wichita, Kansas City, and they provide legal advice. County Council can use them to bounce things off of your department heads. That program has really helped us reduce the frequency of employment claims and other liability claims. They do really good work for us. We also have, you can see the tuition reimbursement programs. Those have not been heavily utilized by the members, but we're really starting to push those more heavily. We have a new risk manager onboard to help counties access those tuition reimbursements. And of course, the Risk Avoidance Grant, where we give $2,000 back each year to you for purchases that'll help you reduce your property and liability losses. And you can see how you've used those programs. So we hope you're happy with the service you're getting from us, but always feel free to call and let us know if there's anything we can do to improve. Any questions?
Your, obviously, your rebate, or whatever you want to call this, is your overage. It'd be like an escrow account that builds up too much and they give it back. That's usually an annual thing. Do you expect this to be an annual thing or every five years or?
That's a great question. Yeah, the board is going to evaluate on an annual basis. That's part of, now in policy, that net asset position. And actually, that same actuarial consultant is going to come back each year. Now, what the board decided for this next year is, you recall, we have the rate stabilization program. We instituted it in 2012, we renewed it in 15. And you, with that program, you get a one-time capital contribution in exchange for you make a three-year commitment to stay in the pool. So you decide, and then you get a rate cap to go with it. So you decide, do we want the contribution and the rate cap? If yes, you commit to a three-year period. You did that in 2015, you got a $21,000 credit. And so the board's going to look at reinstating that again for this upcoming year, starting in January 1 of 18. So in lieu of a dividend, what you'll likely get offered is a contribution credit again this year. And then next year, they'll go back to looking at dividends for other program years.
Thank you.
How long has terrorism been one category by itself?
I'm sorry?
Terrorism, how long has it been a one category deal?
In terms of, how long has it been in the coverage?
Yeah.
We... Let's see, on the property side, I think it's been there many years. It's been there for a long time. On the liability side, we added terrorism coverage probably two or three years ago. So you have it for both, so if you had a terrorist event and the county got sued because you didn't have proper security or whatever it is, and so people who were in here have claimed for damages, you would be covered under the liability program for that. If they destroyed county property as part of a terrorist act, you're covered under the property program for that. Does that address your question?
Yeah. Any other questions for David? Thank you for coming in, thanks for...
Thank you very much for having me.
Bringing the dividend checks.
You bet. Try to do that more often.
Yeah, yeah. All right, take care. Do you have any public comment today?
Ted Stone King?
Right. Good morning.
I'm here this morning in regard to a matter, application number 1706-1492, special use permit by the Ottawa Co-op for grain storage. It appears this matter is going to be brought before you at a future date, a date which apparently Ottawa Co-op already knows as being September 6th, as they've sent letters out to producers asking them to be here on September the 6th. I prepared handouts for the commissioners. These handouts represent notes from our presentation to the planning commission. And they outline the concerns of the close neighbors that live in the proximity of where this proposed facility will be constructed. I ask that you will review these concerns raised, and when this matter becomes before the board, the commissioners will allow some understanding and flexibility to that five-minute rule. As our neighborhood group has again requested that I speak collectively for the group in response to such a matter that has such a serious impact on the surrounding homeowners' lives, would be very difficult to condense in just a five-minute statement.
All right.
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Paul, if I could speak to that, I did verify this morning that it'll be before you next week. So it is, in fact, the 6th. And then what we've done historically with regard to public comment is, if a group of people collectively kind of appoint a spokesperson, we just pool their time. So in theory, you know, there'd be eight or 10 people, I think, that'll be here. I mean, if we wanted to allow him to speak for 40 or 50 minutes at that point, that's typically what we would do. So there shouldn't be any concerns about the five-minute rule.
As long as they're appointed by a group and not self-appointed, I think that's always a good policy, so.
Yeah.
All right.
And there's no study session on Labor Day Monday, right?
No, no. Yeah, it'll be Wednesday.
Well, thank you, and, all right. That brings us to our consent agenda, which would include approving, or consider approving minutes from our meeting on August the 23rd. We have a tax change order in the amount of a positive $181.84. Is that the, that's the levy amount or the? Okay, 98.20, positive 98.20, that's the levy. And we have payroll on here.
We do?
Okay.
I'll have to ask it out for you.
There it is. Payroll for the period of July 21 through August 20th, in the amount of $1,114,000. There are motion to approve consent agenda.
Some move that we approve the consent agenda is read.
Is there a second? I think Roy had a second.
Oh, sorry. I didn't hear him. Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, our first item of business, consider appointing Breann Hall to serve as a treasurer on Appenous Township Board, and this is with you.
As I previously told you guys, I emailed you out the letter this morning of interest from Miss Hall. She was contacted by the previous person that held the position, Cindy McClanahan, and showed interest. She came to their budget preparation meeting, and I discussed with her what the duties would be. She said she's happy to fill that position. We published it as we're required to do, and we had no other interested parties that sent in letters of interest, so.
So it's an elected position that didn't get anybody to file?
Cindya filed, but then she moved out of the county.
Okay.
So we need somebody to fill that. And it's, you know, Cindya kind of did everything for that township, so the other guys just kind of supported her. But so Breanna understands what the duties will be on her part, so.
Until next election, correct?
Yes, she'll fill the seat until the next election.
All right. Well, is there a motion to approve appointing Breann Hall to serve as treasurer on Appenous Township Board?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Second item of business is consider appointing Kim Finney to serve as trustee on Greenwood Township Board.
Kim Finney had held the position of trustee up until January of this year, when the new term started. Kim, that being her first term, was unaware that she needed to put her name on the ballot for the election last year, and someone got written in for the position, John Shepherd. John Shepherd indicated to me right away that he did not want to hold the position. He also does Central Cemetery Board, and he works for KCPN L and is out a lot, so doesn't feel he has the time to do it. I was waiting for John to get me a letter of resignation. He finally did do that, and I've had the letter from Kim Finney for a substantial amount of time, just waiting on John to get me his resignation letter. So Kim has been helping the board all in the meantime, since January. She's anxious to be officially appointed to the job to continue doing it. So we, again, published, didn't have any other interested parties. Kim's the only one that's came forward and interested to do this.
All right. Is there a motion to appoint Kim Finney to serve as trustee on the Greenwood Township Board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Third item of business is also to consider appointing or reappointing Lester Wertz, Aaron Clifton, and Charles Hurt to the city of, the Richmond City Township Consolidated Fire District Board.
Lester Wertz contacted me and said that there were three seats up on their board. It was Lester himself, Aaron Clifton, and Charles Hurt. According to the letter that I received from Lester, he would be reappointed for three years, Aaron Clifton would be reappointed for three years, and Charles Hurt for two years. And then that would take us till next year, when two more need appointed. We've generally done this upon the request, according to statutes, and how the Richmond Township Fire Board was set up, so.
Questions? Would somebody like to make the motion to appoint Lester Wertz, Aaron Clifton, and Charles Hurt to the Richmond City Township Consolidated Fire District Board?
Make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. Fourth item of business is with the Public Works Department, to consider soliciting painted pavement bids for the 2017 pavement marking project.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Maintenance activities, the Seal Co. project requires, on the favor of, requires bidding the painted pavement project for the edge lines and center lines. The request would be a motion approving solicitation of bids for the painted pavement project for 2017.
Straightforward, we do this every year. Any questions for Jim?
Where's our, is there a chip and seal? Where are we at on that? Is it?
They're still accumulating cover material. Vance Brothers have not returned.
Do we have any idea when, being the weather's starting to cool?
The cover material was supposed to be delivered by the end of August. I'll contact Vance Brothers and tell them we're near the end of August.
How many companies are there probably will be able to ask for a bid on the painting?
Probably three.
Okay.
Twin Traffic Marketing Company's been awarded a project on New 59. They're probably not going to be applying something we can afford on our roads, but traditionally, they've bid it in the past. The other would be the gentleman out of Grand Island, Nebraska, who usually winds up with it.
Say 68 will be having some painting done out there, too.
That'll be, that'll be epoxy, and that's not something where you...
Okay.
We're not budgeted for that.
All right. There are a motion to solicit bids for the 2017 painted pavement marking project.
Make the motion then that we submit bids for the painting, the 40.2 miles of yellow and 80.4 miles of white.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. That brings us to staff reports.
Yeah, as I was sitting here this morning, I got an email from the attorney who is working on our tax sale, and progress continues to be made there. One of the things we requested when we utilized that firm was that they continue to use local businesses for the various aspects of the tax sale, one of which is preparing the title reports. And they are prepared to use Crouch or Abstract, and they should be contacting them within the next week or so to get that process started. So that's a fairly big step in this, because you need the title reports. And once they're prepared, the lawsuit effectively is imminent at that point. So I'm pleased with the progress there. A couple tourism-related items, and if we want to bump this to a study session, we sure can, but we've talked a little bit about an advisory committee out there. And I am still looking into this, but it appears as if, if we're going to have a committee, and we don't have to, but if we're going to, it's looking as if it has to be 10 members. The statute's kind of quirky, and I am going to verify this. But that kind of begs the question, do we want an advisory board if it, I mean, if it's that large? That's an awfully big board. We're currently have a charter that requires a 12-member board. And so in order to put this board in place, we would have to pass a charter, rescinding the previous charter and implementing a 10-member. We talked about five, but I'm not sure we're able to do that. Don't need a decision today, but certainly I would take feedback if you have it. The pluses of having that board, or you could effectively give them an allowance, so to speak, and say, anything under $1,000, you guys decide, you know, if you want to approve it or not. And it would kind of keep you a little bit more out of the day-to-day. Whether or not that's a good thing is really your call. Without a board, you're asking Susan and/or I to make those decisions or bring everything to you. I have no strong feelings, I can do it however you want, but that's, that's something we need feedback on, so.
I think we have a hard time finding 10 people to consistently be on that board. I mean, planning commission's nine, and we have a hard time with that. But...
And I was just thinking, if it's a 12-member board, you're never probably going to have more than seven or eight or nine show up anyway, if you have it or not, there are going to be always vacancies. So it's never going to be as large as what it could be.
Well, then you'd have to have perfect attendance to have a quorum, so.
I, I, I think maybe what Susan would think, her comfort level and hers thinking would... I have no problem really either way, but on the other hand, if it would allow the... Of course, there's nothing that maybe would prohibit the volunteers having their own little subcommit... I don't know, I'm just saying the group of volunteers is like a separate group of people that almost needs some type of feeling of something, I don't know.
Well, but...
I'm either way.
Sure, the statute requires that the committee be comprised of local business owners. So the volunteers would, I'm not sure they would be eligible to serve on any kind of... And in turn, if it was a 10-member board, a quorum would be six. And to get any business done, you'd need a majority of a quorum. you'd need a majority of a quorum, which would be four. So effectively, you'd need four votes to do anything.
What if, I think if we took every single day-to-day request to this board, it would be kind of logistics pain, but I also don't think that putting that on you and the director out there would be fair. What if you took, you could take two commissioners, and then, I guess with you, and look at these and kind of put together a recommendation to come back to this board?
All right, yeah, I'm thinking even Susan, you know, she does a report like Prairie Paws or somebody, that if there's a big one or something, she's not going, but for most of the every day, like you say, you give her a limit, and say, here, you can handle these, and her discretion.
Up to a certain limit, I guess, maybe the annual, or. I think there's some, not the day-to-day expenses, but more a little bit bigger picture, where I guess that way you could take, like I say, a couple people could kind of dig into it, ask questions, and say, you know, how does this fit, is it? I don't know, just a thought, but.
Well, and what we're talking about are basically requests for TGT dollars. I mean, we're working on an annual budget that will ultimately come before the board, at the same time each of our departments does. So the true day-to-day, I mean, it won't come before you, and just like Jim Hague's day-to-day doesn't come before you. Primarily, the advisory committee would be in place to all of the requests that come in for TGT dollars, and another thing to think about is, I think the procedure we are going to implement is that each of these requests, we basically mandate that one time a year, by this date, if you want money, here's when we're going to consider it, and that could cut down on the logistics issues, because effectively, I mean, we'd be coming to the board once every year, and so at that point, if, you know, if I'm only before you, you know, once, I don't, it's not that big.
Not a big deal at all.
Susan, I've spoke with her, she does not have a strong opinion, and she was kind of looking to me for guidance. She sees pros and cons in each approach, so I don't, I don't think the answer necessarily lies with her, but she, I will say, she does have a good feel for this. I mean, because typically, what I will do is, we get these requests, and I've asked her what she thinks, and she sends her recommendation over to me, and I think every time, it is exactly what I would have done, so the trust is certainly there from me. Either way, a resolution is going to come up, because we need to rescind the current charter, because we don't have a twelve-member committee, so.
All right. I could see the logic, you could bring it to us once a year, or?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe twice.
Yeah.
Potentially, if you did it, you know, January one, and you had an event, the second, well, they would have to really submit almost two years ahead to actually use that money to promote, or whatever, so.
And that's still, I mean, that's not set in stone, that these are just, that is a, an example of a procedure we've talked about, but there'll be ways that we can organize it, that it's not a logistical nightmare, so.
But you know, there is a flip side of that, if we had the advisory board of the business people, the motel owners, restaurants, and so forth, that are going to benefit more directly, maybe tourism, they could meet quarterly, just not to, not to deal with the money requests, but input into transient guest tax and stuff, because I'm, I don't want to shut those people out and say, well, we were going to have advisory board, now we're not, without them at least having some input to whether or not that was something. If we tried it and it fails, they don't meet, that we can't get enough people, then it's not on us, but if we just say, well, we're not going to do one, we said we would, but now we're not, that kind of worries me just a little bit. From, from their standpoint, that they want to voice the hotel people, and some of those people might want to voice somewhere. And like I said, it doesn't have to be on the request for money.
Yeah.
It could just be on advisory board.
That's right.
Have some ideas about billboards, or advertising, or whatever.
Yeah, that board can look, with the exception of the members, like their responsibilities, I mean, that can look like however you all want.
Right.
We can set that, so.
And I think Susan would have an idea of whether or not there's that feel of a need from that group of people or not, maybe, I don't know, but I'm, I'm good either way, but I just don't want to just slam the door on people.
I think it would be good if the, the right people were on that, or right representation from different organizations as well, so there's some coordination for some of the events that do take place, so that, you know, if one organization, you know, is already maybe donating a large sum, that information could be relayed a lot easier in a board atmosphere. So I think there is some, I think there's some safety and some good advice that could be gathered if we had a board, instead of just bringing it all here.
Love to see that board loaded with hotel people.
Yeah, well, you got Main Street, you got your municipal auditorium person, you've got those kind of people that, you know, they would get involved.
I guess, like I was going to say, I'd love to see a board loaded with hotel people. I think part of the problem in the past was, that's money levied on hotels, collected from that source, and then the people with the loudest voice end up being the ones that kind of might, you, you know, I guess the highest and best use for that money would probably be, or should be, to increase more collections, to do whatever gets more people in beds. Well, sometimes that was, was maybe used for, to benefit people that did bring visitors, but maybe not necessarily the overnight visitor, so.
Well, and it'd be similar to the planning commission, in that we would set it up to where you all would have to approve each member, I guess if that's what you want.
And you could pick what segments they come from, one from this group, one from this group, one from this group, maybe one from Williamsburg, well, you know, the people like that, and you could probably come up with, I'm not sure how hard to be keeping filled, that's like you say, but if they only met quarterly, and they weren't, you know, overly burdened, maybe, I don't know.
I think the hotel owner would be the best adept to make a tough decision and say, you know, that is a good, a good event you're putting together, but it's just not one that's going to benefit people who actually come in and stay, so. All right.
Well, I'm, I'm happy, I've got a resolution prepared that implements a ten-person, so it sounds like, what I am hearing is, let's give that a try and see how it goes, and I'm happy to do that, so that will likely be, unless I hear otherwise, what comes before you for your consideration. Another tourism-related item, historically, they've operated a gift shop out at that visitor's center. Is that something that you all wish to continue? The feedback that I get from Susan is that she would like it to. It's certainly not a huge driver of revenue. I'm in the process of assessing the expenses that are associated with that, and obviously, if the expenses outweigh the revenue, and, and they might, I don't know, then that would be something I would want you all to know, but that is also something, again, I don't necessarily need to know that today, but that you might consider whether or not we want to continue doing that.
I always had a question about that from the standpoint, there's Ottawa University stuff there, so is that their stuff, or did we buy it from them to resell, and same way like Power of the Past, or the Car Show, they had stuff there that was, what I would have thought other people's, I don't know, leftover, or whatever, I don't, I don't know what that process was, whether we bought it, and then, I don't know how that worked.
Yeah, well, and I can certainly figure that out.
Because I do think it's nice that they come in here, there's probably three or four, there's some, I'm sure some restaurants, people have their own shirts, if we were selling, they could buy that product there, like OU, or Car Show, that, I, I'm not sure that's not a bad idea to have something there. But we shouldn't lose money.
Yeah, sure.
And we should know how much money's being brought in, unlike before, when we really weren't privy to that information at the end, but, so.
Well, and I, and we know that, and I want to say that roughly twelve hundred dollars came in last year. Certainly, all of that info will be given to you, I'm, I'm not worried about that. Right now, what I don't know are the expenses associated with it, and Commissioner Renaud, he kind of brought up the question, are we paying for stuff from OU, and if so, that is obviously an expense, but I still need to figure that out, so.
I think it, I think it'd be nice to keep the gift shop there, just to kind of fill up this visitor's space, and let people look around at stuff.
Sure, okay, okay.
Promotes Franklin County.
Yeah, local stuff, so.
Okay. Very good.
Just going back there, Derek, I might just say, I think some of the people are expecting to have an advisory board, that
Yeah.
were on the board before. Some people might think of it as self-serving, which probably is somewhat, but it also helps facilitate events we have, if we have people that are there that can help facilitate, like the Car Show or other events. So I think, I'm for trying another advisory board.
Okay. Okay, very good. Well, I got the feedback that I needed, so, and I don't, I don't have anything else.
All right. Good morning, Sheriff. You'd like to?
Well, the only thing I have at this point is that Friday, we have a deputy who's assigned to court security, that'll be graduating from the law enforcement academy in Hutch, and she's excited to be out, and we're excited to have her back. As you all know, when we have those positions filled, but we're not able to actually utilize them, it, it's, that's not a good situation to be, so this will be another person we'll be able to utilize, she's looking forward to it, and so are we, and that will leave one deputy still in the academy, who's about at the halfway point right now, so we're getting, we're getting there, getting, getting a lot closer. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
It's not a question, Sheriff, I've never met anybody yet that wasn't excited to be out.
Yes, that, yeah, you're right.
It's a long, long fourteen weeks.
It is a long fourteen weeks, and you're down there for Sunday through Friday, and so it does, it spends its time away from the family and everything, so, yeah, she's excited to be back, so, thank you.
Thanks. Jim?
This afternoon, Representatives of Kdam will be here for the kickoff meeting for what occurred, what, the twenty-second of August, with eight inches of rain.
What are we, how are we with getting roads back together, and what do you expect we've lost, other than gravel?
The emergency manager estimated between a half and a million dollars.
Worth of rock?
Well, labor, equipment, materials to get us back to where we were.
Did any bridges or roads wash out above?
We had three pieces of, three areas of guardrail, one up in Centropolis, one on the bridge on Oregon north of Sand Creek, where the drift came down, force of the water literally tore the I-beams off the side of the bridge that was holding up the guard fence. Whether it'll rise to something that, you may recall, in two thousand sixteen, we had an event, we spent ten days or two weeks with two representatives, Kdam here documenting our damages, and Region Seven FEMA said, you can handle that through your normal budget.
All right.
I'm concerned with what's happening in Texas, that that may occur this time.
Sure. All right. Commissioners' comments, board reports.
I haven't been to anything since the last meeting.
The only thing I can comment on would be the Wellsville Car Show last Friday night was, I, I noticed that on the shirts, they had Franklin County was one of the donators, and I would say that tourism money there, that obviously, a lot of people from out of county came into that event, and, well, they traveled through the county, or whatever else, but certainly was well advertised. I know the helicopter rides, was, McCarthy Chevrolet was escorting people in new cars out there and stuff, it was a very good event, very well-organized event, and I'm sure they appreciated the support from the county for that event.
The only thing I've been to is the airport days, and a group of us rode out from the conference center as part of the run and ride group, and had a good time at the airport event, and it was well-attended by a lot of people, so.
I might just say, Cowboy Days is Saturday here in municipal auditorium. Also, if you're going south on I thirty-five, the Homewood Press Stop Vietnam Veterans, nine twelfth chapter, be having a safety check there, there'd be a lot of flags and stuff out, and they enjoy anybody stopping in to say, hi, get a cup of coffee, starting Saturday through Monday.
I haven't been to the hospital or the neighborhood revitalization group since last few minutes, so I don't have anything to add. If there's nothing else, look to your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? For adjourn.